All right, next is setting of the agenda. Anybody have anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is that second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is our citizen public comment period. This time is provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And Ace, anybody sign up to speak? Okay. Did anyone would like to address the board who failed to sign up? Hearing none, we'll move right on. First, we have Mr. John Redding, Central Virginia Workforce Development Council. And Mr. Redding is appearing before the board to provide an update on the Central Virginia Workforce Development Services to provide to Amaz County. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, thank you. I've been on the board now, this, I'll be starting my fourth year here in this month, so, uh, being a board member, a lot of times I feel like I'm just a warm body in a seat that is providing a necessary vote to meet government restrictions, requirements, and so forth. But I'll do what I can. I have a brief report, I guess I send it out, but I understand it was not distributed, so I'll, I'll read that. And if there's anything you ask that I cannot answer, I promise to do the research and get back to you with the information. The Central Virginia Workforce Development Board is designated as a regional workforce convenor by chief elected officials and is responsible for coordinating workforce development at all levels. By engaging employers, education/training, and human services organizations, the Workforce Development Board addresses workforce issues and develops solutions for current and prospective business needs to provide a skilled labor force at the regional level. The mission of the Workforce Development Board is to provide the primary connection between its two customers, businesses and job seekers, ensuring demand is met with a highly qualified supply of applicants. The Workforce Development Board provides oversight and support for the Virginia Career Works Central Region with the mission to advance economic growth by preparing and connecting individuals with Virginia businesses looking to hire and build a stronger workforce. The board is responsible for administering and overseeing the Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunities Acts, adult dislocated worker and youth programs in the central region. The board coordinates programs that are designed to assist job seekers, access employment, education, training, and supportive services in order to succeed in the labor market and to match employers with skilled workers they need to complete, compete in today's economy. The funds for the board are received via the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Our fiscal budget for fiscal year '23, which is just beginning, is 1.846 million, and eleven, of which 11% is allocated to administration, 15% to dislocated worker programs, 32% to adult programs, and 42% to youth programs. Some of our partners involved in this are Humankind, Central Virginia Planning District Commission, Central Virginia Community College, Virginia Employment Commission, O D L E Management Group, and Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Redding, I had requested you to report, cause, but you've written us, I'm on the Clio Board, and I was interested, what specifically has Appomattox County gained because of being part, being on this board? What, what does that Workforce Development Council provided Appomattox County with?
Okay, I can speak probably more in the youth area. They have a career navigator by the name of Sir Ryan House that is working closely with the school guidance counselors and so forth. Now, those are kind of case-by-case basis, so he will meet with, with somebody that is needing help in some way to enhance their ability to be a productive worker and develop a program to help that individual. The, the other area would be the adult supervision. I'm less up to date on exactly that, but they will, they have some of the other services like Humankind and so forth that will work with them. They have the training, the Central Virginia Community College, of course, we have the campus here, so they are making moves to, especially in the area of STEM and vocational type training rather than toward a four-year degree. I can get you more information as far as to the, what's applied directly to Appomattox County.
Yeah, that'd be nice, cause at the last meeting, they had some of the members of the, heads of those different programs, and I kept hearing about things going on in Campbell County and other counties, and it was like, well, what are you doing in Appomattox? It sounded like they were doing about nothing.
Okay.
So that's why I was, wanted to get a report from you to see if you knew more than, well, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I will, I'll get back to you. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Redding, we appreciate your update. As it's not seven o'clock, let's move on to our action items. Town of Appomattox requests Hunter Street abandonment. The town of Appomattox has requested that the board consider proposed road abandonment of a section of Route T-1036, Hunter Street, from the western boundary of property owned by the trustees of Liberty Baptist Church, in a westerly direction for a distance of approximately five tenths of a mile. The portion of Hunter Street in the children's park service serves, no public necessity is no longer necessary as part of the parking in the children's park. So we just need to schedule a public hearing on that. So you want it in August? Was there about as feelings?
Uh, yeah. If we need a public hearing, yeah, just, I make a, yeah, I make a motion, set August the 15th.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion duly made and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department. Supervisor Hinkle requested for the agenda to include a discussion concerning the Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department newly purchased fire truck. The county committed $250,000 toward this purchase with the first $50,000 annual payment beginning FY '25. This floor is open for discussion on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hinkle.
I requested this because in our budget discussions, we talked about doing something more, and we never actually made a decision on it. And the way that we're currently funding fire equipment, it, I think it needs to be changed to be more workable, something we can plan ahead for rather than, you know, we're like being, we're reacting instead of being proactive. And I'd like to see us be proactive. And I guess what I would like to do is make a motion that we, uh, there are several funds that we can have the funds, that we have funds in, so it wouldn't require any new appropriation. But I would like to make a motion that we pay our 250,000 commitment to Appomattox Fire right now to save them interest, and included in that, pay the remaining balance of Pamplin of 100,000. The next two payments we owe them, is that what we owe them, Bill? And then, in addition, I guess we should handle that motion first and then go into my next.
Okay. The motion, motion duly made is now set.
How about some discussion?
Oh, yeah, it's coming.
I can say, I'm on second for discussion purposes, yeah.
Right, motion duly made and second. Now, discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what, what about ARPA funds? Is that a possible thing, or how do we determine that? When do we determine that?
The care of funds?
Yeah.
That still is being looked into, from what I can understand. But I think it's a great possibility that we can do that, we can secure those funds for this, for this very subject.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be my interest. I just think it's a good use of the money. And if it's specifically earmarked for really, um, well, specific things, then it, I just think that's a good use. We bought an ambulance with the one, the one time, and then the, the grant money with the internet, so that would be my first choice.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? The one thing different about the care, the ARPA funding this time is it's a different set of criteria. So, and I don't know, I, I just don't know whether it would qualify or not.
Right.
The, I, I agree with Mr. Hinkle on one hand, and on the other hand, I'm a little, as far as, we just adopted a $52 million budget last month. And then to come back this month and say, well, let's spend another quarter million dollars here, let's just, to me, this should have been discussed during the budgeting process. I fully support the fire department, I mean, they do wonderful things for our community, they're all volunteers, and we're not gonna let them, you know, go under. If they need money, we're gonna give it to them. We gave them an extra 50,000, what, three years ago? They had their five-year run at the money, and they still needed more, we gave them an extra year, so they got $300,000 instead of 250. I think there's other things to look at. I don't think $50,000 a year every five years is gonna keep up with the pace of the increase in the cost of apparatus and everything else they gotta buy. I do think we need to look systemically at what are our costs going forward, what are their costs going forward, and whether we need to tweak this arrangement we've currently got where Pamplin gets money for five years, and then Appomattox gets money for five years. I think that certainly could be looked at probably sooner rather than later. You've also got to incorporate into that discussion how much the town of Appomattox is gonna be putting forward. I mean, they're currently putting in 25%. Well, they put in a little more last time, but typically, they've been putting in 25% and the county's been paying 75. We need to look at that arrangement, cause it doesn't equal out to the, where the call volume is. I like where you're going, but I, I think it's gonna take some, to me, anyway, it's a little bit more than just, hey, let's pay this off quick, because we've also got some big expenses coming up. We're looking at renovating the old courthouse, we're looking at, you know, we don't know how much that's gonna cost, we don't, we, we're still paying on the high school, we don't know if they're gonna run into any snags on that. I'm a little leery of spending our money when we've already got a plan to pay for it, which everybody agreed to, knowing we got some big stuff coming down the road. And we got a radio system we gotta do something about, it's gonna cost probably millions. So I think all of that's gotta be looked at together. I think we got a plan to pay for this truck, let's keep to the plan, and then let's start looking at all the other things. That's just my initial thoughts.
Let me add my two cents. Uh, Mr. Hinkle, I love your thoughts there, I really do. Go on, get this thing out of the, out of the way. And Mr. Hogan, I agree with you too, only so, what would happen if we, well, would you consider, I should say, that we pay it off in Pamplin? And then next year, take a look at all this for further discussion, distribution of funds, and next year's budget?
Well, where I was coming from, Mr. Chairman, is we do have money left over from last budget, so it wouldn't affect the current budget year that we're in. It wouldn't increase that or take money from it. This is money we've already appropriated, it's left over from last year. And I'm looking at the amount of interest that we'd be saving the fire department. And, you know, if, if we have an opportunity to save them money where they don't have to get more money to pay for interest on the truck, the same way, you know, Pamplin, I'm paying it off early, they're gonna save interest on the truck. So to me, that, that's a win-win for taxpayers in the community.
That's right.
And on the other issue is I'm looking at, you know, we talked once before about having a committee and look at it and get the Pamplin Fire Chief and the Appomattox Fire Chief, and probably EMS to get together and say, look, what major equipment and the sheriff, and what major equipment items we have, that's, you know, what you talk about every time, Bill, the capitalization, what we gonna do? And I think that committee needs to get started. I think it needs to have a preliminary report back to this board, like, in four months, and then, so that, you know, by the time next button season rolls around, we can have a final report that we can act on, you know, in our '23, '24 budget.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Do we know how much interest it would be saving them if we did this?
May I ask the fire chief?
Sure. Well, ask him.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the fire chief serves like to ask him. Mr. Garrett, do you know, prize me how much interest you'd save if we gave you this 250K now?
Roughly 20,000.
20,000?
Over the next seven years?
No, it'd be five.
You know, so, sometimes interest is just the cost of doing business, you know, five, four or five thousand dollars a year to get a $600,000 fire truck, that's a pretty good bargain. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman? If I could follow up with the chief as well. Well, how much in donations did you garner from the public? How about a guess?
Probably over the course of the, we done it three times with our mail-in, it's probably over 40,000, I would say 45 each, that we, and then it was put forward towards this, but the payoff of the loan versus the amount, I mean, it's already.
What I had submitted to Mr. Hinkle was 364,000, that's the remaining balance, but the payoff, I think, is closer to like 380 something.
Right, the point I'm trying to get at is, we saved 20,000 in interest, and you only garnered 40-some thousand from the community at large.
Over the course of three years.
Over three years.
Yes, sir.
So 50% of that is essentially absorbed in the interest. So that's, that's really where your concern comes from.
Yeah, and we're getting those donations from people who are already paying taxes, and 20,000 means a lot to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any additional questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, the only other thing that pops into my mind is, okay, we do this now, what happens next year? You know, we're gonna give 50,000, what's, cause it's always gonna be another purchase. Trucks were out, equipment wears out, and this is another end in saga, I know, cause I've seen it, you know, and it's not, there's always gonna be another need, and we gotta figure out how to fund those upcoming needs. We got a ladder truck that's gonna be, need to be replaced here in the next few years, and we're, you know, we're talking over a million dollars for that. I, I'd rather see us look at it comprehensively than just this one loan.
Mr. Chairman? That was why I'm asking for this committee to get off the ground and do something, to come up with that comprehensive plan. So like, if we wanted to start a fire truck capital investment plan, we deposited so much every year out of our budget into that fund just for fire trucks, and then when the fire truck need came, we've already had that money saved and built up, and we wouldn't be having these discussions every five years as to what we're, how we're gonna pay for it, you know, how much we're gonna pay for it. And by paying off both Pamplin and, and this, you know, doing this Pamplin and Appomattox payment now, it would kinda put us on, we're starting from ground zero. We've met our obligations, and now let's come up with a plan for the future.
Any additional questions, concerns? Mr. Latchney, correct me if I'm wrong, the motion was made.
Motion was made, pay the 250 and 100 for Pamplin, second, and so that's the motion.
Motion made, second. Discussion's been held, let's have a roll call vote.
May I make a comment prior to your vote?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Mr. Hinkle alluded to funds left over in last year's budget, and he had asked me for that number. You would have to make a motion to carry forward those funds if you wanted it toward the purchase of that, with that 250. So you've got from last year FY '22 budget, $239,000 that you could technically carry over into FY '23 budget to make that payment.
So when they do that first?
That needs to be part of that motion, if that's how you wanna fund it. And also authorize staff to check into ARPA funding to see.
I would suggest this is three motions. Do the first one first, if there's a yes, then just note a motion, carry the funds forward if that's what the board wants to do. The other two issues are irrelevant to the first one.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
No.
And I vote aye. Okay, the second?
Second motion would be to transfer that 239,000 from last year's budget to this year's budget.
Does that motion doubt effect? The 239?
I, I wanna, Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna see what the ARPA funds are gonna do. Well, I guess, there's no harm in transferring the money, I suppose.
Right, you can have it sent there.
We could just, okay, sure. Yeah, so moved to transfer the?
239.
239, $239,000 into this year's budget.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. At the third motion, Mr. Latchney?
Third, the third was just an informal motion to, to ask the county administrator looking whether the ARPA funds are available to do that, and that, just everybody just nod their head with their good head.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hinkle?
And I understand from a third-party source that it was either Pennsylvania or Pittsfield County used their ARPA funds as for debt reduction on a fire truck.
All right, that's good news. Okay. Still got a few minutes before the public hearings. Uh, Amaz County Public Schools reappropriation request FY '23 budget, you have before us? Let's see, total of $1,35,597.63. Is there a motion to transfer these funds, to reappropriate these funds?
Mr. Chairman, I move we reappropriate the funds in the amount of 1, 1,35,597.63 as requested by the school.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. And I do believe we can go through the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of all bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be consulted by the board individually, in order which they were removed from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. And I hope everyone's had an opportunity to, uh, review this. We do have one thing we know that the, was it the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Had to be amended, and that was the reason?
It was pointed out to us that there was a motion for closed session at the last meeting that was, they were transposed, so we corrected and put the right motion in place.
Everybody understand that? Okay. Now, after reviewing the additional consent agenda items, is there any item, any supervisor would like to talk about, has a concern? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the amended minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is that second?
Second.
Discussion. Well, roll call vote, Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Have you got anything?
No, I'm just distributing my report, so.
Okay.
Maybe the county administrator?
Yeah.
I mean, the.
Yeah. Mr. Latchney?
Uh, sorry, if I had something, I'd use up the two minutes, but I don't.
Oh, all right. Mrs. Adams?
And I'll just report that I prepared a report for you, and most of it is just data from the various departments. If you have a question, feel free to contact me.
Okay. Reports and informational items, we have before us Sands Anderson delinquent tax status report, Central Virginia Workforce Development Area Council, and Robert E. Lee Soul and Water Conservation District Board of Directors meeting minutes. Any questions on any of those items? Hearing none, we got, according to the clock in the back of the room, we got, what, two minutes? Huh?
It's countdown.
Countdown.
Seconds.
Okay. Let's reflect back to the agenda. The public hearing, lease of property to Appomattox Christian Academy. After being duly advertised and in accordance with Code of Virginia 15.2-1800B, the Amaz County Board of Supervisors will receive comments on the proposed lease. The proposed lease is related to the property known as the Copper Price Complex, intended to be leased to Appomattox Christian Academy. The property is designated as a 189 Price Lane and identified as tax parcel number 6482A86, and is consisting of 16.5 acres together in all buildings and other improvements. And we have with us also, our county attorney has prepared a lease for her consideration. Mr. Rohr, go tell your list. Thank you. And we have with us, Mr. Bowe, and Mr. Bowe, you'd like to do your presentation? Mr. Bowe, I'm sorry.
Hope I can remember how to use this. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address the board. My name is Bruce Boone, I'm the junior warden of St. Andrews Reformed Episcopal Church, and in that role, I'm responsible for the financial stability of the church, and also for the buildings and grounds. I'm also on the board of the Appomattox Christian Academy. Appomattox Christian Academy is a mission of our church. Our church, our parish started 20 years ago in the old Harp Building, and we started Appomattox Christian Academy 18 years ago, 2005. And we've been well-received in the town, and been blessed. and been blessed with many ways. So what I'd like to do tonight is kind of tell you why we're looking at Carver Price and how it would help us. Back in April, Father Grouse and I were talking about our five-year plan. We're always looking at our five-year plan. We're always looking where we need to go next. When COVID hit, we were at a peak of 120 students and growing. COVID hit us all. We pulled back from the from the Baptist church and tried to get our herd back together so that we wouldn't be so exposed to COVID. So during that opportunity, we also had an opportunity to get another piece of property, which is now called Boone Hall. It's seven acres and allows us to expand more. So when Father Grouse and I were talking, we were looking at a need that we really realized is impacting us. We're looking at the effect of things that are happening. It's hard to get people to work. It's hard to get people, when they graduate high school, to figure out what they want to do. So what we want to do is reimagine what we're doing at ACA and trying to do something that's better for the county and our students. So as our kids move through college, excuse me, as they move through our school, we're going to, instead of just letting them go through the school and graduate, we want to look at them to see if we want to fast-track them to college or look at vocational training. So when we looked at our five-year plan, looking at the facilities that we already had, we're limited on the Redfield Road location. So we really can't expand there. We can expand some vocational training, but not to the extent that we can do at Carver Price. I've been a resident here for 25 years. I've ridden past the Carver Price location, never really paid attention to it. But when I found out that there was so much unused space, and it is a school, and it really fits our growth needs, I took a look at it. We took a look at, will ACA really fit into the facilities that are here? So we looked at the flow of traffic. We looked at the unused space, which I think is around 47,000 square feet. A few months ago, I was involved with the auditorium expansion renovation, and they came up with a name of AIPAC. So I had already looked at the site, but not in the detail as I looked at what we're looking at to expand the school. When we took this look at the facilities, we were looking at maybe bringing in a new driveway so that we wouldn't interfere with the traffic that's already going into CBCC or Carver Price. And again, we're looking to expand vocational training. So I want to move into more of that. Again, when we talked about the Appomattox Performing Arts Center, this is basically the auditorium that's already here. There's extreme interest in renovating that, bringing in shows, plays, performances, musical groups. So we're already looking at that. We already have a plan, and that can be incorporated in what our overall plan is. So I mentioned that we're looking at vocational training. The first staple of our vocational training will be welding. And I'd like to bring Nate up to talk about that. Nate's from Arc Three.
Hello, good to be with y'all. I'm Nate, over at Arc Three Gases. We used to be Arquette. Some of you may remember Brammer a few years back. And I had the privilege, and I won't have to do much selling on Mr. Boone or his plan. I had the privilege of spending three hours with him and Mr. Perry the other day. They brought me in a little bit for perspective, really. So I have the privilege of working several counties. I work Appomattox, up to Brookneal, Cumberland, Blackstone, Amelia, of course, Farmville, Charlotte Courthouse. So one of my favorite parts is I get to work with a lot of high schools, middle schools, we got community colleges, technical centers. And then, of course, we have great connections with the AWS, certified weld inspectors, and we also have wonderful connections with manufacturers such as Lincoln and Miller that could play a huge role in this. If you can't tell, Mr. Boone is all about planning. So he brought us in ahead of time because he's got a vision, but he wants to make sure he makes the right moves. We've also been in contact with Virginia Technical Institute. I believe it's Mr. Moore started that down the road. They kindly offered to let us come and tour their facility. So Mr. Boone's got a lot in this planning. I guess my only part would be, I guess, to not sell the opportunity, but from my perspective in the welding industry, just how exciting this is for me. Now, of course, we sell welding supplies, so we have to get out of the way that there's business interest here. But personally, my favorite parts, community colleges, high schools and stuff, because the opportunities you see put forth before people, whether it's young people or people trying to find a career later in life. From what they painted the picture to me, they're talking about, and they're doing the homework, talking to local businesses, is what they're looking for in employees, starting off specifically with the welding. I mean, the vision they painted to me is beyond exciting. It's not just exciting for Appomattox County, it's a regional excitement. All those counties I just mentioned, and I worked in Richmond for 12 years. This is a first-class vision that they have. To me, it'd be wonderful, and the need I can't express deeply enough. So some of the AWS numbers right now, within the next two years, you're probably looking at at least modest speculation, 430,000 open, not potentially open, but open welding positions in the country. We were talking about the excitement. I get to deal with the Martins, who are about to expand into Thomasville. It's another super-exciting thing for the county. They're probably going to double, if not triple, their workforce. They're definitely going to probably triple their welders needed right here in Appomattox. So I guess I'm just here to say, from what I've heard from Mr. Boone and Mr. Perry, I'm just super excited. And it's not to come sell stuff. It's that the opportunity for the families, the young people, or people, well, I can't stress enough the opportunities that are out there. And then he's got a five-year plan for the other trades to roll in. And from being out in the business world, I probably don't have to tell any of y'all. I don't care what industry it is, and I don't care who the business owner is. They need workers right now, desperately. Every single one of them said, like I would say, Mr. Martin, he would probably triple his welding staff as soon as they move, if he could find the workers, but he won't be able to. Some of the kicker to that is, a lot of these companies are developing a lot of automated equipment, not because they want to take jobs, but because they need to fill positions. So it'd be exciting to see what they could do, given the opportunity to have this field. And I don't mean to take too long, but it is very exciting. I appreciate everybody's time. Sincerely appreciate Mr. Boone allowing me in. And I've brought my bullet points, which I paid no attention to throughout this whole thing. But thank y'all for the time, and I really appreciate, like I said, Mr. Boone. And I commend y'all for even letting it get this far to potentially use a space like that or something like this, because I really can't stress enough, in my territory that I cover, which is from Farmville over an hour radius all around, there is nothing like this going on, giving people opportunities and what it might could bring to the county as well. So sorry to take so long. If you can't tell, though, this is, oh, we've already lined up. If potentially this can move forward, I have already lined up several contacts to network and make sure that these decisions are made properly, not just for the curriculum overall, but just for the way that they could then transfer. Lynchburg already has business owners committed to things like this, Richmond to things like this. So you're talking about potentially having young people or people later in life finding a job. They would transition right out of a program like this, and they'll have jobs waiting on them. And that, I don't want to say a guarantee, because who am I to say? Seems like a guarantee there, so. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I'm going to shut up now. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
I wanted Nate to speak so that you would understand how serious I take this. I always like to make sure that whatever I look at does make sense. You can have a vision, you can have an idea, but if it doesn't make sense, if you really can't do it, you shouldn't. Not that you shouldn't try, but you shouldn't give people false hope. I'm excited about this. The more people I talk, the more excited I get, because this is something that, the need has been here, it's time for it to move forward. We want to partner with the surrounding people in the county. I already talked about the AIPAC Center, the auditorium. We want to reach out, and I've already reached out to Carver Price. One thing we want to do in Appomattox Christian Academy is to tell the Carver Price story. Start from the Rosenrill School to Carver Price. Just tell the story, it's a written, good story to tell. We've reached out to Central Virginia, CBCC. I've had three meetings with them, one with Dr. Chap, and two with his local people, one here in Appomattox and up in the Lynchburg Center. Those meetings went really well. We're going to do enrollments with our students. We're going to, as our students are pushed toward college, we're going to get them to get not only college credits, but maybe associate degrees. And on the tail end, when they graduate, we'll have three or four colleges in the area ready to accept them. So again, we want to do our homework with our children so that when they graduate, they have someplace to go. I've reached out to Dr. Bennett at the high school. She's very excited about it because their welding school is not accredited. So our school will be accredited, and our students can get full accreditation, excuse me, certifications. So she's very excited about that because right now she's shipping her students to Lynchburg. And to have us build something locally will help the school, help the county. The homeschooling. We're going to develop something called the university model. Homeschoolers, parents can, as they start homeschooling their children, as they get into the higher grades, it becomes more difficult. So they can reach out to Appomattox Christian Academy and maybe take classes one or two days a week. And then as their child grows, we can take them into the school. Now we have a child that's highly motivated and has creative study skills because their parents work with them. So, and again, then we look at that child and see if we want to fast-track them to college or fast-track them to vocational training. I've talked to Ron at Stallworks. I've known Ron for years. He's excited about what we're doing. Ron is an example of what we want to do, and Nate touched on it a little bit. As we develop our welding classes, we want to reach out to all the different businesses in the area and see what they're looking for. We're not looking for a one-size-fits-all welder. We're looking at what does Stallworks need, what does all the other people need, and try to get our students educated in those ways so that when they graduate, they have someplace to go. We don't want our students just carte blanchely graduating and then going to college because they don't really know what they want to do. We really want to make sure that we've done our due diligence. We've been guidance counselors to them all through their education, and as they get into the higher grades, they know, yeah, I'm ready to go to college, or you know what, I'd like to do some vocational training. So... Before I get to the final slide here, we really want to use our our welding training center as our first footstep on building a vocational school. We're going to be looking at the demands of the area. We're looking at health and human services. We're looking at the building trade, framing, framing homes, electrical, plumbing. There's a great need for masons in the area. So again, we're not trying to do everything at once, but as we do things, we're going to do it right. We want to make sure we've done our homework, just like we're doing with the welding training center. We're going to make sure, you only get one opportunity to make a good impression. We want to make that great impression. We want our students to be in demand. We want them, by the time they graduate, they have two or three opportunities to go to. Instead of saying, I don't know what I want to do, I'll go spend four years in college. But if they're good for college, we're supporting that, too. So in summary, what I'm asking tonight is for the board to consider the lease agreement that's there. I have a lot to do. I really want to get started. And as soon as I can be relieved to get started, I can start building this.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor?
I'm Bill Jamison. And I had the opportunity, about three weeks ago probably, to look at this whole presentation with Bruce. Well, he called me, wanted to talk to me, said he had an idea. Well, the first thing I thought, Bert, he wanted to talk to me, had a private idea, it's going to cost me some money. Well, he put me at ease. When he first came into our office, he said, I'm not looking for money. And I said, well, let's sit down and talk. He outlined his whole plan with us, to me at least. And I said, Bruce, it's an ambitious plan. I can't beat to the meeting to help you present it, but I'll be your biggest fan, a biggest cheerleader, if you can put it off, because it's a great program. And I've known Bruce now, I've had the opportunity to work with him for several years and significant matters. The biggest thing I can say about him, if he does what he says he's going to do, was more important to me than that, he does it right. You heard him say, what he does, he will do right. And so I just want to support what he has said and what the plan that he's laid out, and encourage the board to support his agenda. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor? Mr. Ready?
I've been wearing the same hat I had on earlier. In meetings with the Workforce Development Board prior to the COVID, Banker Steel and a couple of other companies said they could hire 50 welders if they walked in today. And it hasn't gotten better. So there's opportunity out there. This would be a great thing, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
To the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors, good evening. I am Ora McCoy, and I live at 7397 Oakville Road, Appomattox, Virginia. I am president of the Carver Price Legacy Museum Board of Directors. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you. I am pleased to know that there are plans to preserve our dear Carver Price High School. This has been a labor of love to keep our school in the spotlight since 2002. The renovation of Carver Price Educational Complex will serve as a beacon of hope in our community. We look forward to being a part of this adventure. We want to work together to make Appomattox County a great place to live. When you come into Appomattox and see the Carver Price Complex, you can see the improvement the Carver Price Legacy Museum Board of Directors have made to the building. We have invested over $150,000 in this rundown building, and it's now coming to life. And I will say, it's a definite conversation piece when you talk to people through the county. We are in the process of creating a state-of-the-art museum in the first-floor front portion of the complex. We presented to you in a closed session the need for additional space in the building. We hope you will consider our requests as we work together to make this a national treasure. Because after all, this is where the Civil War ended and where our nation reunited. Now we'll ask Mr. Don Jones to come forward and explain our reason for requesting additional place. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. Board of Supervisors, Chairman, Ms. Adams, thank you for giving us the opportunity last month to come to you and ask for additional space. As we told you then, since we've started this project, our eyes have been opened, open to the fact that there's more history here than we ever thought. As an example of that, in 2016, Swan Auction held an auction in Farmville. But that auction wasn't about Farmville. It wasn't about Prince Edward County. It was about the Jordan family. Some people would say Jordan, the William R. Jordan family. Mozzella Price's maiden name is Jordan. It was her family's papers and memorabilia that was sold. It was her family's papers and memorabilia that was sold. The buyer of that material, as I said before, never really pays high dollars for acquisitions to their collection. That's the Library of Congress. The Library of Congress paid over $20,000 for the Jordan Estates papers. In that were multiple documents, of which we have access to, of history of the Carver Price School in Appomattox County. When that occurred, part of that exhibit, part of that sale, was a family Bible. I earlier made a mistake and said 19th century. It was actually an 18th century family Bible. One of the very first Bibles that contained pictures. That Bible currently is on display on loan from the Library of Congress and the African-American History Museum in Washington, D.C. That's the kind of items that we have determined and found that's available to us on loan and through other museum sources. All the papers that we thought were lost are in the Virginia State University's archives. Those papers are all the material that pertains to Carver Price High School. In the Jordan files are pictures of the dedication of the Rosenwald Building. On the front porch of that Rosenwald Building was the entire Virginia State Board of Education, Mr. Burke, the school superintendent of Appomattox County, and Ms. Price. That's the kind of documents that we've discovered. Now, we've hired, as you well know, Riggs Ward, one of the most highly desirable museum design firms in this country. He has done the Appomattox Civil War Museum here, American Civil War Museum here. He had a lot to do with Trediger. He did a lot of the work at Moulton. He's worked Moton, excuse me. He's worked with the Jefferson School Museum in Charlottesville. He's done work for the Virginia Historical Museum. These are just some of his projects. We are in favor of co-op with Mr. Boone in this building. But we desperately need more space. We have determined that we can at least have two more exhibit rooms plus an archives room, which right now we have no space for in archives and research facility. We know for a fact that once we get this museum open and get these archives in place, that we are going to be inundated with people coming here to do research on Appomattox County. I've already had questions about what our files will consist of. And it's anything that we can get our hands on, including materials from the county, I mean from folks in the county and other sources outside of this county. I commend Mr. Boone for what he's doing here. A high-bred, high-tech vocational school is a need. Not only do I believe it will bring businesses to this county, it's needed because not every child that comes out of high school is college caliber or doesn't want to go to college. A first-year HVAC contractor or employee can make $40,000 to $60,000 right out of school. So there is a need. But at the same time, we have a need for additional space. And I would greatly appreciate it if you all would consider giving us some additional space in that building so that we can continue our process on building a world-class museum here. We're farther along than we anticipate. We hopefully will be able to open this museum on a soft basis come the fall of the year. And then we will move forward from there. We're waiting on the design plan right now. Do you have any questions of me? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. As I stated earlier, I was asking for people in favor of this.
We're in favor of it.
Okay. Anybody else? Is it anybody here to speak no on the subject? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have comments that Ron Martin from Stallworks called today. He was unable to make the public meeting because he has some back injury, some health issues. But he wanted me to share this with the board, his comments. And he said he had met with Mr. Boone, that they are conceptually on the same page. He feels like this would afford the opportunity for the workforce to gain valuable skills. He feels like it's a need in our community. He supports the project. He believes in company partnerships, so he's planning to partner with Mr. Boone and ACA. He's excited about it, and he's excited to be a part of this project.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else I'd like to address the board on this subject at this public hearing? Here none, I close the public hearing. Now, my fellow board members, you've heard everyone speak in favor of this lease of property to Appomattox Christian Academy? Is there a motion to grant this to Appomattox Christian Academy?
Chairman, I move to be entered a lease agreement with ACA for use of the building?
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Hinkle?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I remember in talking with Dr. Boone several times on this that he is more than willing to work with Carver Price on their needs. And I'm sure that between the two of them, they can work out an agreement. And I don't think this board needs to be involved in that. But just go ahead and lease the building?
Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
Mr. Hips?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay.
You may want to comment, Mr. Jones, that was his support also. Mr. Jones, that was his support also.
Reverend Jones?
Oh, yes. Excuse me. Reverend Jones also, as he is not here, but he supports this. So you have a unanimous decision. Next is a public hearing on Town of Appomattox Streetlight Easement. After being duly advertised and in accordance with Code of Virginia 15.2-1800B, a public hearing has been scheduled to receive comments on granting a utility easement to the Town of Appomattox in order to allow for the installation of streetlights along county property bordering Main Street at the library. Said easement shall be three feet in width along with the entirety of the eastern boundary of the property where it borders Main Street. A deed of easement has been prepared by the town attorney for our consideration. Is there anyone here to speak in regards to this?
We do have, we have requested just to survey and validate exactly what we're asking for. Dixon's survey was trying to get it done before today, but I don't think they were able to get that done today.
Any question for the board members?
Mr. Chairman? I don't know if you could tell us, is this just basically the existing sidewalk? Or is this additional footage?
If you look right in front of the library, the specific light that we're talking about, there are four planners out there, and there's one that's right in front of the door. And this position is that one right at the corner of that plane. But yeah, it's right along those lines, light poles.
Any other questions, Mr. Hink?
Yeah, I was wondering, the planner he's talking about, is he talking about that he needs to remove this planner?
No, I'm just giving you a position to line it up.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Anyone else here to speak on this subject? All right, hereby close this public hearing. Now, after hearing from our town manager, the chair is open for, to hear for a vote, a motion?
Chairman, I move we pre-approve the lease, or the deed of easement with the town for their street lighting.
Motion remains at second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Hips?
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Oh, aye. But, well, would Mr. Hinkle be willing to amend his motion to authorize the chairman or whoever is necessary to sign the deed? Do we need that?
I think the motion could be.
Okay.
The motion is to approve that the House authorization is signed.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. Now vote aye. Okay. Now bear with me. Make sure that I ain't left out of anything.
I know.
I'm to supervisor concerns.
Yes. And next, I proudly announce its supervisor concerns. Mr.?
Hips. Yeah. No, sir, not tonight.
Okay. Mr. Hinkle?
Sprouse Spring Transfer, Sprouse Spring Trash Convenience Center. I had a couple people mention that there's a problem with mud there when it rains. And there's one, if there couldn't be some more gravel or something put in there so that it's not a big mud puddle where they have to dump their trash when they get out of their car.
Mr. Hogan?
Following up on what we started the meeting with, fire department issue. And I do think we need to talk about that. There are things down the road that we need to figure out long-term. We've got a radio system we need to do something about. It's not just for them, but for the sheriff's office and rescue squad. That's gonna be a significant undertaking. So I do think we need to get that ball rolling. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about the process. We've got a public safety committee. We'd be happy to start some of that discussions. Or if you think another way is more appropriate, but we do need to get something going on that. And then, just as a form of announcement, while we're talking about fire departments, the Pamplin Volunteer Fire Department will be celebrating 70 years of service to this community this year. And they are having an open house this Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Pamplin Firehouse. There'll be giveaways for kids, and they can look at the equipment and crawl all over the trucks and all that kind of good stuff, free hot dogs, some cooking. That's not a reason to come, but they will be having an opening house for that. The public is, of course, invited. And then last but not least, I didn't mention it last month because I thought you were. I want to congratulate our new state championship teams, baseball and softball teams. They put in a lot of work, and they are a credit to our community. And we're proud of them. I congratulate them.
You could have said it in the bell.
To the fore. Send the action in to the fore.
Now, the main thing, Mr. Hogan, is you're gonna have to, will there be an opportunity to buy Country Ham and Guarda Mayla?
I don't know, Mr. Chairman. I'm not on that part of the committee.
I got a couple items. One, and Ms. Adams, you're gonna have to lead me down the straight and narrow path on this. WSAT, I didn't see it in Lynchburg News, but WSAT announced about this harsh dealings with dogs. Or a dog down the drive-through creek, you know? Do you remember that?
Is that at Washout Gap?
Washout Gap, yeah. Charlotte County. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, it wasn't an open investigation because there was a dog there and a cage there. It was assumed that someone had abandoned the dog, but we don't have evidence to prove that. So we have set salt care, medical care for the dog, and it's in our custody. And we did find someone who was the owner and said the dog had been stolen from them. So we had them assigned custody to us. So now it's been taken care of, and medical care has been granted. And it's up for adoption, if anybody wants it.
Thank you. Originally, originally, this dog was from where? Was it Appomattox County?
Yes, this dog was.
Second thing I had, I talked to Walmart manager, a manager. I think you have four, five up there. Anyway, in regards to the breezeway from Walmart to over to the shopping center, and on the right-hand side of that road, it looks like, I don't even have words to describe, it looks like a jungle. And it's their responsibility to keep it mowed and trimmed. Now, I talked to this manager about two weeks ago, and I see absolutely nothing, no progress has been made on that. So do we need Mr. Rohan to let them, up there, letting them know what their responsibility is?
It's in the tail limits.
In the tail limits, okay? So, there we go. Yes, that right there, yeah. The home grounds beautification has got to do something with that, and they are responsible for that. So appreciate any help.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Is that area in front of Wendy's in the town's jurisdiction?
I don't know, is it?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Why can't the town get somebody to put a big one-way sign there by Wendy's mailbox so people quit starting to turn right and come out into the ingress, egress of the shopping center? I don't know how many times people have come out of Wendy's and tried to get right into the left turn onto 460 lane, and meantime, they're sitting there blocking ingress traffic. I don't understand.
You got your work done before you.
You know, the one-way painted on the tarmac isn't doing it. They can't read, people can't read that. And then I also noticed that the one-way signs on the Wendy's building coming from the Kroger gas station, you can hardly read them too.
That's all I had. Okay, next, we have a closed session. Mr. Latch?
Whereas the board supervisors of Appomattox County desire to discuss a closed meeting following that, discussion, consideration, interviews of respective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, devotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public bodies. Pointees or employees of the public body concerned.